Twenty seventh, twenty twenty five meeting of the Edington Town Council to order. Our first order of business is a public hearing regarding a proposed text amendment to our unified development ordinance. It's my understanding some questions have been raised with staff about some details of this and it might not be appropriate to consider tonight so that we could look at those considerations and requested changes. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. In order for us not to have the hearing tonight, we would need a motion, second, and a vote on it. Is there a motion to table this until what? Our regular scheduled meeting for July? Okay. Okay, I've got a motion. Three of a second. Okay. Motion and second. Any discussion regarding that? All in favor of tabling the proposed text amendment to the U D O please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Okay, we'll take that up hopefully at our July meeting. June meeting. Thank you. Pushed the fast forward button a little too quick. Thank you. Our June meeting. The next agenda items involve special meetings. The first one is a special presentation from the Edington Historical Commission and we've got Executive Director Robert Lee here. Robert, come over.
Thank you. Let me get a paper. So it's a privilege for me to be here with you to talk a little bit about what the Edington Historical Commission is doing within the town of Edington and we very much appreciate all of your individual and collective support. I put together a little PowerPoint presentation for you and I thought I would kick off with this image, which is the Five and Drum Corps, you know, marching down Water Street during the Edington Tea Party two-fiftieth celebration. Just because I think it's a reminder of the great success we had last year partnering together, getting important state funding to commemorate the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary appropriately and the commission and all the other nonprofits working with the town on a great celebration that included a parade, a music festival, the First Lady of North Carolina being here, lots of public events and programming. And also because I think it kind of symbolizes the Edington Historical Commission on the march, to speak. In the background, you've got the Penelope Parker House on the waterfront and it continues to really serve as the waterfront welcome summer for visitors coming to Edington and also where all of the trolley tours begin for visitors who want to tour and experience Edington and become oriented to the town as a whole and from there find the various shops and restaurants and historic sites that they want to explore. Okay, thank you. But what we're really involved with these days is overseeing and administering some of the major restoration and historic preservation projects. I thought I would begin with the Pupil House. Again, this is a photograph taken from last year. Last fall, we completed the negotiations with the Brooklyn Museum for the return of the Pupil House original woodwork after it was loaded on a train car and shipped to New York in nineteen eighteen, so after a one-hundred-and-seven-year absence from Edington. Where we are now in that process is that the, here you see the woodwork being removed from Brooklyn. It arrived in Edington last November and really this week, we will complete the second phase of removing all of the reproduction woodwork that was created in the nineteen-sixties and the Pupil House Association Board is very engaged in figuring out creative ways that that woodwork in the nineteen-sixties can benefit the community and major projects in the future. And we're very hopeful that the Pupil House Association Board will come to a great determination that will please a lot of people. Moving forward, we will now spend the summer, now that really the last of the nineteen-sixties woodwork is removed, and so the first floor is stripped down to the frame. It is an architect or a construction expert's dream to be able to see nineteen fifty-eight masonry and framing completely exposed. So we'll spend the summer looking at what are the structural repairs that are needed, what are the electrical or plumbing upgrades that might be needed, what are modifications to the security system that might be needed, and by next fall, roll into probably a six-month phase of reinstalling the original woodwork. So the goal for this project is to achieve completion by the spring of next year, which it's worth noting will be the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary of our country. So we think our timing is actually really good to have a major project being completed in tandem with that two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary.
Where is the original woodwork being stored?
It is stored, it is currently in a warehouse on Old River Road. So we were able to find a great warehouse space, so the reproduction woodwork as it's coming out is going into that warehouse, into that warehouse, and then the original woodwork stored there now will this fall start leaving and going into the original building. The other thing is with the Caddish restoration project, I think it was a great day in Edington when we could complete the reconstruction of the original steeple that we knew about from historic photographs, but we knew it had been struck by lightning in the nineteen-fifties and then recreate that. On the right, you're looking at an aerial drone photograph after the, after that steeple had completed getting all of its standing seam or working. Quite a dramatic photograph where it really looks like a snowflake or a Christmas worm. And maybe our retail people will feel inspired that way, but many of you had a chance to be there or you've seen the film footage of the crane lifting the new steeple up and moving it over and putting it down on top of the church. So where we are now with this project is, we're, and I think in a very good place over the next few weeks, we'll be very focused on completing the Caddish exterior. The last of the remaining stained glass windows will be going in. We didn't want to put stained glass windows in the vicinity of the bell tower and the steeple for safety sake. We knew we needed to get past this project before we put the stained glass windows in there, so now we'll be able to return stained glass windows in that corner of the church, complete exterior carpentry, complete exterior painting, and really in the next couple of months be fully moved into completing the interior of the church. And again, I think we're looking at projecting a completion inside and out of the sanctuary and the parsonage by no later than the spring of next year. So the spring of next year, the two-hundred-and-fiftieth anniversary, I think will be a really, really great year for Edington with the Pupil House project coming online and the Caddish church restoration project coming online. And I think one can envision some pretty great public programming wrapped around those things. Part of what I wanted to call to your attention as we move these projects to completion is that Edington is really beginning to get a lot of attention regionally across the state of North Carolina and even nationally. Here you see a recent shot of the interior of Caddish after the first stained glass windows went in. And then on the right is a blogger in the preservation world in Charleston, South Carolina, who came to town to see what we were doing. And she then talked about Edington as a preservation miracle, as a rising center for historic preservation and shared that with her several thousand followers on her blog. Her blog is called The Accidental Preservationist. But as we move forward with all these projects, we really are beginning to become a center for where scientists and scholars are coming here to study what Edington has and their findings are being shared nationally in the preservation community. So on the left, you see Dr. Susan Buck, who's been doing the historic paint analysis of the Pupil House, and on the right, Dr. Amelia Jensen, who's starting the historic paint analysis at Hays. And Amelia will be coming back tomorrow to start her next phase of pain investigations at Hays. Susan Buck is almost wrapped up with her final report on the Pupil House. She's already given one public lecture with her preliminary findings. She can't finish her report right now because she's in Beijing, China, working on the Imperial Palace in the Forbidden City. So in terms of what is the quality and the international reputation of the experts we're bringing to Edington to work on these projects, it's the very highest. I mean, Susan Buck is really the leader and to have her junior colleague Amelia taking on Hays is a real tribute. Earlier this year, we also had Doctors Michael Worthington and Timothy Corsley. They're both English-born, Oxford and Cambridge-educated scientists and specialists. Mick Worthington, many of you may know, did the work on the earliest house in Edington a while back. He now teaches at the University of Maryland along with his wife. He is the nation's leading expert on dating buildings through tree ring sampling. That's called dendrochronology. And he's also a former TV star in the British television program Time Team, if you've ever seen that on TV. Timothy Corsley is a geophysicist who specializes in ground penetrating radar. So it was great to have both of them here at the same time. Mick has worked on dendro sampling at Hays and all of the Hays outbuildings, the stables, the Richard Cox House, so we can get a much better sense of how that complex evolved over time. And Tim Corsley worked on ground penetrating radar in the rear yard of the Pupil House as well as at the Hays cemetery and at the eighteenth-century colonial house site at Hays that could have been occupied as early as seventeen fifteen, when Chief Justice Frederick Jones is known to have lived on the Hays property. We see that site depicted in the seventeen sixty-nine Saudi map and what Tim will be able to tell us about what survives underground there has the potential to be very, very exciting. So again, we're seeing scientists and scholars coming to Edington, people with national reputations in a way that is really very positively reflective of Edington's reputation. Recently, we've hosted a three-day field trip for the Clemson Graduate Program in Historic Preservation where it's twelve students and three faculty members came to Edington to study all that we have going on here right now. And they spent time at Hays, at Caddish, at Pupil House. They were joined by three staff members from the Richard Hampton Gin Red Foundation that was interested in funding that project and has produced three summer internships, two of which are for John A. Holmes High School graduates. Thank you. So I'm happy to say that part of what we see is that these preservation programs are not only part of Edington's identity. History and historic preservation, as we like to say, in Edington is good for business. It's part of the town's identity, but it's also creating opportunities for both established and young Edintonians. So when the, when Preservation North Carolina just announced its summer internship program, the Myrick Howard Summer Internship, it's great that it was a John A. Holmes graduate, a young Edintonian, who was the successful applicant for that, in that statewide competition. And so this summer, that will be Harris Mordecai. Another John A. Holmes graduate, Cam Morris, who is in the, attending the American College of the Building Arts in Charleston, will be doing a summer internship at Hays because he's decided that historic preservation, carpentry and that kind of work is where he wants to move his career. Next week, we'll have another one of the Clemson graduate students here for, we, for their summer internship, but we see people like DeAndre Wilkins, who's finishing his accounting degree at Elizabeth City State, now working in a leadership administrative role with the Caddish project. So over and over again, we're seeing the economic benefit of these projects beginning to create long-term professional opportunities for young Edintonians who are seeing not just the history of Edington, but they see the preservation of that history as part of their future and how they can build their careers. And we're seeing Edington being a place like where Laura and Wade Rogers are moving here. And so Wade is now on the Preservation Commission and Laura is now the head of Edington State Historic Sites. And I, it might be fair to say that if we didn't have these projects, that the Rogers family might not have moved to Edington. But I think, again, this is a sign of how all of this is really benefiting the economy and historic preservation really is good for business. I'd be happy to take any questions.
Well, Robert, I appreciate you being here tonight and the way you tied it in certainly makes sense and we're big believers in what you're doing and how it bodes well for the future of Edington, so we're very appreciative of your efforts. And I'll tell you this, in the public that's here now, one of my simple pleasures for me now that the Caddish steeple is up, is if you travel east on West Gale Street coming from Bramble to Broad Street and stop at the stop sign there right across the street from the farmer's market and just look up in the morning light or the afternoon light and see that steeple, it's something to see. It's really, really inspiring. And that's the way I go to work in the morning. I always look up every day, I look up and I see that steeple. And it tends to ground me and calm me down even before the rest of the work, so I appreciate what you do.
It points in the right direction.
But I don't have any questions or comments. Do any of y'all have any questions or comments?
When do you think you begin the interior of Hays, Judge?
So some of the work on the interior has already begun, so like addressing flooring issues, that's begun, and we're about to get much more involved with the interior, with the HVAC system. The components of the HVAC system are ready to go back in. So we'll be increased, the goal will be to wrap up the exterior the next few weeks and from that point on, we'll be exclusively focused on the interior. We just completed an initial survey of all of the interior fragments that survived from the hurricane, all the interior railings, altar furniture, various pieces of interior details that have been in storage really since Hurricane Isabel, so we can look at those and look at what their conservation needs are going to be. So by the end of this summer, we'll be pretty much exclusively focused on the interior.
I just want to say we're all grateful you're here and still can't believe you did come, but Wade was qualified for this job, but what you've done is really miraculous. And the team, you know, Chess and you and Chamber and just all putting together sort of a preservation and a economic development way is just doing great things in Edington.
Oh, I would like to ask the other question. So one of the things we've discovered at Caddish is that it originally had a decorative beaded board ceiling, and that's been gone for quite some time. We know that one survives at what used to be St. John's, the African-American Episcopal Church, it's now St. George's Orthodox, but we're interested in finding any other African-American churches from the eighteen nineties, early nineteen hundreds that might still have surviving evidence of those kind of beaded board rather than plaster ceilings. So we want to take a close look at Gale Street and Providence and maybe as far as Elizabeth City to look at African-American churches of the region that might still have evidence for that same kind of treatment. So if you're aware of anything from your own visits, let me know because we might be able to look at that.
Thank you again, Robert.
Thank you.
Appreciate you. We have another special presentation. We've got Brooke Rich, who's the Executive Director of the Edington Chilwana Educational Foundation, to give us an update on all the good things that they're doing. Brooke, thank you for being here.
Thank you, Mayor. Hi. Like he said, my name is Brooke Rich and I'm the Executive Director of the Edington Chilwana Educational Foundation. Some of you may know me from my days at Walgreens as a pharmacist, but once my husband and I had two children that entered the educational field, my passion changed a little bit and I was invited to sit on the school improvement team at White Oak School with principal, assistant principal, lots of teachers, and I really was able to see an inside view of what it takes to make a school really happen. And throughout that, I just continued to get involved in education in our county and this opportunity presented itself and it just felt right for me to take it. So with that, I'll get started. The mission of the educational foundation simply put is to support education in Chilwana County. So we're going to work with team members in the county to support our teachers and our students through financial means and human capital. Our foundation is structured, we have an executive director, an executive board, we have a larger foundation board, and within that, we have subcommittees in different areas like our grant process, scholarships, budget finance, fundraising that help us make those decisions within our organization. We have three main areas of implementation where our work is truly done. The first area is within classroom mini-grants or mini-grants within the school, scholarships and field trips. The top picture there is from scholarship awards night just a few, I guess it was last week, and the bottom picture is from a field trip with some high school students. So what's new in twenty twenty-five, the foundation decided to hire a part-time executive director, which is myself. We also have a new office, which is located in the second floor at Town Hall. We have greatly appreciated that space. It has allowed us to take the next step professionally, so I've been able to meet there with individuals interested in the foundation. We've had some subcommittee and our board meetings in the conference room down the hall. I've been able to talk to Cory about things and Chess and just created a nice network of individuals, so we appreciate that opportunity. The future is sitting at that desk right there. So what have we received from the town of Edington? We were very fortunate to receive seventeen thousand five hundred dollars in the fall and again in the spring. We like to think of them as semesters that kind of follows the school season. We were able to award fifteen thousand dollars, fifteen thousand one hundred and seventy dollars in the fall and we're up to thirteen thousand nine hundred in the spring, and I'm still receiving grant applications today. So we do have a process that we follow. There's a, there's a grant request form that individuals can fill out. It does have to be approved by their principal, so we're trying to work hand-in-hand and make sure that the school entity is using its budget to the maximum effect and then we want to supplement that so that we're really making the most out of their financial situation and ours. I do anticipate next year completely maximizing these dollars. Without this money, we would not be able to present, award half of the opportunities that we're able to thanks to your dedication to education. This is just a few pictures from what we were able to supply to the science department. Joy and I had the pleasure of loading up our car and the cart and taking it to the high school and it was right at Christmas, so it felt right placing all those supplies right through the Christmas tree. So what are some of the mini-grants that we've been able to provide this year? At our music, at our middle school, we were able to survive, provide some instrument kits to the music department, some additional notebooks for enhanced writing opportunities. We have, in the STEM category, there was a group that came in and set up a mobile planetarium in the gym and they also talked about some jobs within that field. Every student from the middle school was able to attend this. They rotated through. We also provided clipboards and chart paper to the English Language Arts class, and you can see download some of the poems that they wrote. Some of these are larger opportunities and some are just as simple as clipboards and chart paper, but as you're going through their budget, you know, towards the end of the year, it, the money is gone. And so I love when the staff says, hey, clipboards and paper, can you do that? And absolutely, let's do it. So the less that they can come out of their pocket, the better off that we're going to be. I think it energizes the teachers and it's just a benefit for everyone. At the high school, we were able to support one of the teachers who wanted a career-ready education program. This, she really helped them provide, build like a resume and a portfolio and do interview skills. The science department supplies that I talked about, they have, the science department has a budget, right? But this teacher and the group of science teachers, they really want to take it to the next level and that's where we can step in and we can provide that opportunity that they want to give to their students. We also were able to provide some textbooks for the AP US History class, so they can, some students can afford these and some students can't. So we were able to provide a supply in which the students could check those out for the semester. So it really also helps kind of level the playing field for students who may want to take AP US History but don't have the finances to buy all the supplies. At our lower schools, White Oak and DF Walker, we were able to provide some curriculum materials that they needed in the speech pedagogy department. There's a new exceptional children classroom and she started from scratch, so we were able to give her some soft blocks and special books, sensory tools for her to create her classroom in which her students could thrive. Also, the CKLA, which is the Language Arts Reading Writing Program, they have, are split up into different sections and the teacher wanted prisms and kaleidoscopes to really put what they were learning into action. We also bought this picture here for the music department at DF Walker. Those are called boom riders and they are percussion instruments for the students to learn without having, you know, ten drum sets, as you often imagine, would probably not be enjoyable for anyone. So she was very appreciative for those as well. Our other category that we help support are student field trips. We were able to send some of the students in from the high school in the exceptional children class to Little Washington. They were able to visit the Estuary Room there, which is really cool, and the Underground Railway Museum. These students, they also were able to, I think they went to eat at Pizza Hut, and so to develop their independent skills, they were able to order their food and sit in a restaurant. These are opportunities a lot of students may not get otherwise, so that teacher was extremely thankful. We were able to send some high school students to the math competition at Elizabeth City State University. We have provided some assistance to students attending the FCC LA National Leadership Conference in Florida. A few students from high school are going to the Hobie Leadership Program at NC State. Some college tours, the school provides college tours for some seniors, but this through this program, they can go ninth, tenth, eleventh and so on. So it really sets that foundation that college is in their future. We also are sponsoring a few students from the middle school to go to us in the Cape this summer. And then new this year, we kind of, I call it teacher field trips, but our music teacher or the music teacher at the middle school is very excited and he wanted to attend a music symposium at Western Carolina University, so he's going to get that opportunity. And a few teachers from White Oak and DF Walker just got back from the UFLI conference, which is in Florida. UFLI is the literary program that they use at kindergarten through third grade. It's a very low-cost program to our school system and it's, they're seeing great results with it, so these teachers really felt like if they could attend that conference and learn more about the program and make it more effective, that would be great. And they just got back last week and they were so excited and so pumped up and really hopeful that they could send back a teacher from each grade level for next year. Another area that the foundation focuses in is scholarships. So the town of Edington money doesn't go to the scholarships, but we manage a lot of the endowments for that. It's such a rewarding night for the foundation to see those seniors get their name called and be recognized for the hard work that they've put in this year. So what's the impact of all this? Of all this money that you guys have been so generous to give to the foundation? It's really hard to measure. It's hard to know what that experience with the planetarium coming in, what, how do you measure that? But what I did was I got some numbers and so just from those few teachers going to that conference in Florida, they're going to come back and all that is going to be, it's going to have the power to impact, you know, five hundred students, that's all students in kindergarten, first, second and third grade. So over four hundred and twenty students were able to attend the planetarium exhibit. The science supplies, every single student at Johnny Holmes has the opportunity to use those supplies, so that's pretty great. Our middle school, or the middle school program currently has forty-five students, but next year, they expect sixty-one students to enroll. So you can tell there's some energy building there and we want to support this program. So what's to come for the foundation? We're working on a new logo right now to really kind of separate us out. It looks a lot like we're really just strictly associated with the high school, with the ace and the colors, so we're really trying to develop a logo in which really sets us as like a real entity separate from that to support all education in Chilwana County. in Chilwell County. One of my goals is to really improve the communication between the foundation and educational entities. I've found it's really hard to know what the needs are and my goal is to really figure out what those needs are and match those. I've attended some principal meetings. I've been on school improvement team meetings. I've met one-on-one with our superintendent multiple times to really get a, build a relationship with her to know what are the needs in Chilwell County. What can we do to help out? I think going forward, we'd like to focus on some teacher retention needs and maybe some opportunities for recruitment of teachers to Chilwell County. So those are some things that we look forward to this year. And lastly, an investment in knowledge pays the best interest. So with that, any questions?
I don't have any questions, Brooke, but I got to do with Robert. I thank you and the foundation for everything that you're doing for our children here in Edington and Chilwell County. And very good to see numbers and figures and some of the great things you guys are doing, but we do appreciate everything you're doing. We're approaching budget season and so we'll see what we can do about being able to continue to support the foundation.
I think we're all grateful that you're doing this. Like we said, with Robert, what you do also has an effect on recruiting people to eat. And so having somebody like you willing to do this is fantastic. So thank you.
Brooke, do we have any scholarship money going to young people who want to learn a trade?
Absolutely, yes. So we awarded a few, I think three or four scholarships directly for students going into trades. So yes, a couple going into the welding program at C O A, at the community college, some two-year college experiences. So as you all know, you know, education in this county is an economic driver. So you can bring people here. The community is beautiful, but the education system has to, has to stay at that level as well. So that's what we're here to do.
Absolutely. Okay. Thank you so much. Appreciate it. Our next agenda item is a request for an encroachment agreement from Main Street Edington. We've got Chess, Chess is here. Chess, if you'll come forward and tell us a little bit about this encroachment request.
Good evening. Thank you. I'm here on behalf of Main Street, but also the Socialite and Visit Edington. So if any of you have seen the Socialite publications from around town, that was spearheaded by Karen Foley just over a year ago and was received extremely well by locals and visitors coming in. She focuses on positive activity downtown and downtown Edington, highlights businesses, usually does a spotlight every quarter. Her latest and greatest endeavor is to do complimentary mailboxes downtown. She has put together and coordinated with four of the local businesses downtown, the two coffee shops and downtown routes, and then us at Main Street Visit Edington on the East, the West King entrance store offices upstairs to do complimentary mailboxes that will be co-branded by the three. So Main Street and Visit Edington have helped fund her publications and help her, have helped connect her with the businesses, but she doesn't need much help connecting. She's downtown beating the street, talking to people, doing pictures and interviews. She's a force to be reckoned with. So the request is that in your packet, you should have the locations. She's gotten agreements from the businesses. These will be temporary boxes, temporary installments, nothing permanent or bolted. We just wanted to bring, bring it to your attention and then work with town staff to work on encroachment agreements similar to outside our patio seating at the restaurants. Have you taken questions or more discussions?
Do you want any questions or comments?
The papers, it'll be fully free. Part of the branding that will be on the boxes is complimentary. So no coin boxes, nothing locked. It's just an easier way. Right now she self-distributes to businesses, to downtown retailers, to the Barker House, to us in our offices. This will be another spot to be self-distributed, to be laid out. And she'll manage the distribution and the maintenance of the boxes.
That sounds like a win-win.
It is. Is anyone getting the Chilwell Herald, put stuff back in the boxes and put them back in the coffee shop? And they took it out of the places that people go and I don't know what, what that's all about.
Yeah, I've gotten a lot of comments about that.
Yeah, nobody can figure out why you can't get a Chilwell Herald unless you go.
I think they're really precious.
But Vernon's not here. I can't speak to that.
It's because they don't import.
They don't, the parts.
If the box goes bad, that's what I was told.
Or anything, yeah.
Well, they can still put it back in the coffee shop like they had it.
Yeah, I've gotten that comment.
They are. No, you pay, you pay for it. Yeah, you pay for it.
Mayor, I would be glad to reach out to the folks from the Herald, try to figure out what it is and get an official response from them about those type of mailboxes.
All right. This request does require action on our part so to continue getting it, moving it forward. Do I have a motion and a second?
Second.
Take that motion. We have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Is there any further discussion among ourselves or questions of Chess?
Is it the averment in the packet forward or have you already drafted the averment or authority?
So what we have, Dwayne's here with us, we have a standard encroachment agreement permit that will fill out for each of these locations and keep on file there as long as the Socialite.
Yeah. In your packet are disagreements from the businesses that Ms. Foley has spoken with them and they agree having a part of their space, but we'd still need to work with Dwayne and the town to get confirmation.
Similar to the other downtown encroachment agreements that we have.
Yes, sir.
Restaurants.
Yes.
Language, the legal language, so to speak, is still the same, but just different.
That's correct, Mayor.
The specifics.
Mayor, is this going to be about five locations?
It is four total.
Four total.
And so the action will be just to have the town complete these forms and approve them with Main Street TDA as well as the representatives for Socialite.
Is that your motion, Sam? Okay. We've got a motion and a second. Nothing further. Call for a vote. All in favor, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that request has been granted. Thank you for bringing it to us. The next matter is a resolution to support Senate Bill 20. You recall, we have discussed this several times. Senate Bill 20 is the act to prohibit certain mass balloon releases. And at our last meeting, we instructed town staff to come up with a resolution. We thought that would be the better way to handle it and then to simply follow Senate Bill 20 as it makes its way through the House and perhaps becomes a law. The proposed resolution in its resolve section reads as follows. The town of Edington formally supports North Carolina Senate Bill 20, an act to prohibit certain mass balloon releases and urges its adoption by the North Carolina General Assembly. The town clerk is hereby directed to forward a copy of this resolution to the Office of the North Carolina General Assembly, the Agriball Commission and the North Carolina League of Municipalities. The town of Edington encourages residents, community organizations, schools and event organizers to voluntarily refrain from mass balloon releases and to use environmentally friendly alternatives. So that's the resolution part of that. Action is required on this. Do we have a motion and a second on this proposed resolution?
Uh huh.
Okay, we've got a motion. Do we have a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion and a second. Now that we have the motion and a second, are there any comments, questions, anything that any council member would like to state regarding the proposed resolution?
Do we follow up with the mayor's task force regarding the plan?
No, this was directed by council in response to the ordinance that was originally suggested. But we'll share this resolution and execute a copy with them once it's executed.
And thank them for bringing it into our attention in the first place, if you will. All right. We've got a motion and a second. All in favor of this resolution, please signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that resolution passes. Next, we move to our committee meetings. And as usual, Councilman Miller, we're going to keep you busy, so I'm going to hand it off to you.
Yes, sir. Mayor, we have four items of business. The first item is fire marshal job description and classification. The town administrative staff is requesting the creation of full-time fire marshal position at salary grade twenty-one. This will be added to the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. This position will oversee fire code enforcement, fire inspection, fire education, plant reviews of our local fire department. They've approved this position to become active July 1st. Administrative Committee, please do forward this request.
Do we have any questions of Craig or of Cory regarding this matter? Anybody?
Salary grade twenty-one is fifty-five, higher rate.
So what this saying, we don't have a fire marshal?
I was going to ask, is that a shared position with the county or is that?
It is.
So currently, the town has one shared fire marshal position with the county. We assist in the reviews and plant reviews and investigations within our district. There's the primary point of contact is over the Center Hill District for the fire district. We did share this with the county because there was a question of it being within just the town's footprint or would it encompass the entire district. And we advised them that it would encompass the entire district for the town of Edington, which runs from south of Tinchtown Road out in the county from south to Drummond's Point. There were some conversations about this being something that the town and county shared more longer term when their fire inspector and fire marshal retire. This is already in a part-time role. And so this is kind of a proactive response to prepare ourselves for that. And they were, they were very much in support of this disposition as well, long-term. The twenty-one is consistent with what we found from the folks from the MACT group with the salary study as well as some of the local review that the fire chief asked had identified.
So the fire marshal that the town hired, he would still give Catholic county, right?
Yes.
Okay. Would the fire marshal report directly to the, to the fire chief?
Yes, it would be, the position would be housed at the Edington Fire Department.
And when you say it's a shared position, does that mean sharing of costs?
There are three revenue streams that we've received in addition to operations, capital and debt service that are shared fifty-fifty cost with the county.
With the county.
Yeah, so this would be included in that.
Okay.
And hopefully, if this were to be successful and to continue after the retirement of the current fire marshal that the county uses for the north end of the state, we would expand to a larger footprint if the county were approved and then we would offset some additional costs that way, long-term.
Okay. All right. Craig, going on to the next.
Item two, item two is the GIS and Special Projects Program Manager Job Description and Classification. Town administrative staff is requesting the creation of a full-time GIS Special Projects Program Manager position at salary grade twenty-one, be added to the town's planning department in the twenty-five, twenty-six fiscal year budget. This position will be responsible for overseeing the town's geographic information system, lead special projects across among actually different departments, and also be responsible for the identification, writing, administration and compliance tracking of grant opportunities. If approved, this position too would also begin on July 1st. Administrative Committee recommends for, Mr. Paul Council.
And this would not be a shared position. This would just be our.
This would be just for the town, yes.
And this person would report directly to the plan, to our assistant town manager.
Yes.
If needed.
And so when we talk about GIS, that volume of need expands across all five departments. When we talk about the volume of assets that each has, which when our water system, the metering system, the electric metering system or stormwater system, just as a whole, the volume of assets we have are really evolving into data-driven data management. And as you know, that evolves when one customer leaves a location and moves to a new one. When we talk about the data associated just with billing. So also, when we talk about special projects, there is a wide variety of grants that have certain milestones that just have to stay on timeline. That some of these special projects only happen because of grant funding. And so this person would make sure that those stay on timeline, whether it's CDVG or whether it's a grant similar to what we've seen for AIA for wear and sewer, that, you know, they work very closely with various departments. And for us, the grant administration around particularly the airport and the volume of what's changing there, this would, you know, be a huge benefit, very cross-disciplined, needs to understand a lot about each of our departments.
And in the recent past, we have had an individual who retired within the last year that handled special projects for us. Is that correct?
Yes, that's correct. When you think about that, if the town were to award a grant funding for waterfront repairs from FEMA, a long-term employee now retired, Bud Powell, would handle a lot of these special projects. If you remember back when we created the purchasing agent position, it was very much evolved specifically for the warehousing of a million dollars plus assets for that electric department. So this would be part of that succession plan as well.
And if we were to approve this in June with the fire marshal creation of that position and then the creation of this position, is staff confident that we can afford adding two new positions on this?
Yes, sir.
Have we considered making this position remote? Just because of the nature of, for a question worth an IP dive, most, you need a great candidate, Paul. A lot of them aren't really committed just yet to.
I think there would be some remote work ability based on what project they're on. I think primarily though this person would need to be here because when I think about some of the GIS needs for our streets or our sidewalks, there's going to be some day-to-day kind of in-the-field testing and things that we don't have. They'll have to collect. And so I think we'll balance that.
But do you think they have kind of a little bit of an hybrid, a little bit office and a little bit remote?
And I think that would very likely happen because if they're in the field, there will be some opportunity where we don't see them all day because they're out actually surveying or measuring things. This has been very beneficial for us when we think about what the technical review committee does and when we look at site reviews and there's certain utilities and things that aren't mapped and aren't prepared. This would be a huge help for us to really streamline approving any type of commercial and industrial development because that data will be collected and now mapped, hopefully surveyed.
Would this person be located in here?
Yes, I see this person either being upstairs with Dwayne and I or downstairs in his old office.
Any other questions or comments on that? All right, Craig, we continue.
Item number three is personnel policy resolution. Mayor Andrew Ware, the updated personnel policy was presented to the council on March 24th. These updates were made following a review by the management of the Personnel Services Group, MACTs, which included a salary study at that time. The personnel policy resolution affirms and approves the policy changes which go into effect July 1st. Administrative Committee recommends we forward this resolution to full council.
Okay. Any comments or questions on that?
Is this adopting the salary study as well?
Yes, this will adopt the personnel policy updates that were shared.
And the salaries.
At the March 24th meeting, we had shared some of the updates the county and miss Becky from the MACTs group had identified, but this will also adopt the salary ranges.
So which one are we, is there a different proposal that we're doing?
Yeah, that's right. This will, those are all consistent with the, so the salary study is consistent with the salary schedule that is represented in this resolution. And so the option one, option two and option three are all embedded in whatever these ranges show.
And as option two, the salary study, we will discuss at budget planning?
Yes. Yes, that's correct.
So the options are still there, the ranges are still there. We're not, and I think this is probably what you're getting at, adopting this resolution, we're not adopting any specific.
That's correct.
Salary right now.
Yeah, that's correct.
Is that, that's kind of what you.
Yeah, it was. Okay. Last.
Okay, last item, four, administrative policies update, in effort to be compliant with all federal, state, and federal laws and regulations as we enter new 25, 26 fiscal year. Town administrative staff have determined certain revisions and additions need to be included with the town administrative policy. The two new revisions pertain to travel training policy and safety shoe boot policy, and the two new additions pertain to substance abuse policy and the clothing allowance policy. The shared committee recommends forwarding these revisions and additions to the administrative policy to council at our next meeting. Are this just two revisions and two additions? Yes, that's correct. If you remember, the administrative policy, we started probably a year, maybe just over a year ago, and some of these were vacant. The two new sections were ones that we were continuing to work on to finalize in the larger document, and the two revisions are simply updates on ones we had approved previously for travel and training policy and the safety shoe slash boot policy. Just two new and two revisions, that's correct. Mayor, that's all.
Okay, thank you, as always, yes, appreciate it. Okay, we're moving on. Our next agenda item is a closed session, and council is about to go into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-318-11A6 to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of employment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer, employee, or prospective public officer or employee. I'm not believing that that applies to what we're gonna do. So at this time, for the course to go into closed session, we need a motion and a second and a vote on that?
Sure.
Got a motion and a second? Got a motion and a second? All in favor of us going into closed session for those purposes, please signify by saying aye. Any opposed? At this time, we will move into closed session, and as always, we thank the general public for being here tonight. Appreciate y'all.